Adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to public laws 1975. Said notice was advertised in the Lacy Beacon and was posted on the bulletin board showing the time and place of the meeting. Everyone please rise and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item one, we're going to change it up a little.
Yeah, we have a special guest here with us tonight and I apologize for not putting him on the agenda, but we have a young man, Robert Corzon, who is here to present the governing body with an item this evening, so why don't you step up to the microphone?
I just got back from a deployment two months ago and I want to present Lacy Township with a flag that was flown over Guantanamo Bay. The certificate reads Camp Five was constructed by the United States to house enemy combatants captured during its global war on terrorism. Taliban and Al Qaeda await their fate within the confinement of its perimeter. On January 28, 2016, this flag was proudly flown for nine minutes and 11 seconds over Camp Five as a tribute to those who lost their lives during the attack and those who continue to fight against her, we will never forget. Presented to Lacy Township.
Robert, behalf of the township, we would like to thank you especially so close to Memorial Day, so thank you very much.
Steve, why don't you grab, somebody have a camera? Take a picture and we'll get it to John.
Get it onto our Facebook page.
Yeah.
Here. You guys get a phone.
I can probably do it right off of my iPad. I can do it right off the iPad.
You got the iPad? Okay.
Come on.
For an hour, of course.
Oh, I'm not a great photographer here, so I'm American.
And I've been so it's more extreme.
Yeah, well, sometimes I need you guys.
A full stand.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
What? This one? Are you ready? I'm going to take, tell you, I'm not a photographer.
You can't stand side, you gotta stand side with it.
Okay, we've got it.
Thank you, everyone.
As you know, we're having our service on Monday, Memorial Day, the great, you know, you have a little ceremony later here if you'd like to join us.
Item one, special use permits, Lacy Methodist Church Shore Fest, June 11, 2016.
This is an annual event that the Lacy Methodist Church has. It's called their Shore Fest where they have the food trucks come in and it's been a very successful event. They're looking again to hold it Saturday, June 11th, which we know Saturday, June 11th is a very busy events going on through town, so I just need approval for them to have a special use permit outside the scope of what their facility is used for.
Move it. Second.
All in favor?
All right. We're going to be in the dunk tank, aren't we? That's that day.
Yes.
VP, you too. VP will be in the dunk tank.
Yes, we're in the dunk tank.
And I won't be in town at all.
For 10 minutes.
Can I go the whole 10 minutes?
Neil and Matthews, call to action for safety rally, July 2, 2016.
Okay, I have been contacted by the Dolphin family with regards to a rally that they would like to hold on July 2nd and they want to start the rally here at the municipal building, do a greeting, a benediction by the clergy, some music, a eulogy. Mothers will speak on behalf of Neil and Matthew. And then they're going to explain their call to action, which Senator Holes Apple is helping them develop some legislation in accordance with their call to action. And then they're going to walk down to, just past Deerhead Lake Drive, to have a rally down there. And they just need permission, obviously it's a Saturday, there's nothing going on here in the building, not that the building would be open, but I've offered the front steps of the municipal building, I've offered police assistance to cross at the Manchester and Lacy Road intersection, plus the Deerhead Lake intersection for safety purposes. So, you know, I was just hoping that we would grant them permission to do this and to have that rally here. I don't feel it's going to put an impact on the municipal building at all because there is nobody here that day.
Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Okay, so I'll coordinate this with the chief so that we can sit down with the Dolphin family and, yeah, and get this organized.
All in favor?
Yes.
All right, we're going to go straight to our township meeting.
So, we'll convene, yeah, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, yes. Motion to adjourn.
Move it.
Second. All in favor?
Yes.
All right. Adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to the public laws of 1975. Said notice was advertised in the Hasbury Park Press and the Lacy Beacon and was posted on the bulletin board showing the time and place of the meeting. Everyone, please rise and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First reading of ordinance 2016-11, providing for funding for the 2016 capital improvement and projects and equipment.
Nor into township Lacy County, Board of State of New Jersey, providing for various capital improvements and the acquisition of various capital equipment appropriating $1,171,000 therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $850,675 in bonds and notes to finance a portion of the cost therefore authorized in and by the township of Lacy. This is for the 2016 capital improvement projects that we have approved. We approved a 3,000 gallon emergency service tanker pumper truck for the Forkett River Fire Company. We've approved a heavy duty public works equipment with regards to vehicle lifts, 30,000 pound lift and a 10,000 pound lift. The acquisition of drainage improvements to and paving for Phase Two of Bayberry Village, HBAC Phase Two for the Police Department. We also approved the complete purchase of the loader that we've been leasing. Now we are going to completely buy it out for this year. And those are the projects that we're bonding for 2016.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor Kennas?
Yes, first reading of ordinance 2016-12, authorizing the sale of Block 4,005, Lot 7.
Nor into township Lacy County, Board of State of New Jersey, authorizing the sale of vacant land known as Block 4,005, Lot 7 pursuant to NJSA 48,12-13B5 and vacating the public right of way. This is a portion of, it's a, the old railroad right of way that runs west of the Parkway through basically privately owned land. There's two contiguous property owners there based on an application put before the pine lands. This property owner needs to, one of the property owners needs to acquire the land. We need to go out and sell it. It is approximately 3.21 acres in the preservation area. So we are looking for a minimum bid, which is the fair market value of $10,000. It's a 33 foot right of way, that's the width of the property.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Kennas?
Yes, second reading of ordinance 2016-10, authorizing the acquisition of an easement by the County of Ocean.
Nor into township Lacy County, Board of State of New Jersey, authorizing the command and easement on a portion of Block 3,300, Lot 4 to the County of Ocean. Just a little background, the County of Ocean is replacing the Daniels Bridge out on Wells Mills Road and we have property adjacent to that. They need to acquire an easement in accordance with the schedule that's attached to this. The project is going to start in July and since it wasn't agreed upon to completely close down the road, they're going to do alternating lanes and the project should take 270 days because of the alternating lanes. So you're not looking for that to have, it's going to have a temporary traffic light there to alternate the lanes of traffic, so you're not looking for this project to be done until approximately April of 17, completed.
Beginning date?
July.
July.
Being the second reading, open us up to the public. Motion to close the floor?
Motion to close the floor, seeing no comments. Move it.
All in favor?
Who made, okay, who motion, made the motion? Tim? And who seconded?
Deputy Mayor.
I'll make a motion on your edge.
Second.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mayor Kennas?
Yes.
I'm all confused, but that's okay.
Resolution 2016-146. They'll be quicker now. Authorizing a place to, a place to, a place to place transfer of a retail distribution license.
Resolution, township Lacy County, Board of State of New Jersey, authorizing and approving a place to place transfer of liquor license number 151244005005 to Town Enterprises Incorporated Trading as Spirits Unlimited. This isn't, they're not moving their location, they're just expanding the footprint that they're currently in, so under the law, it's a place to place transfer, so I just need a motion to approve that.
Move it.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Upstate.
Mayor Kennas?
Yes, resolution 2016-147, renewing plenary consumption licenses.
Resolution, township Lacy County, Board of State of New Jersey, renewing plenary retail consumption licenses in the township of Lacy. We are in a renewal period for our restaurants right now. All applications have been completed and approved for Cafre's, Il Giordano's, Applebee's and the pocket license of the former Rela's.
Motion?
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Kennas?
Yes, resolution 2016-148, renewing plenary distribution licenses.
Resolution, township Lacy County, Board of State of New Jersey, renewing the plenary retail distribution licenses in the township of Lacy. These are the liquor stores, which would be Lacy Liquors, Corks and Caps, which is JR's and Spirits Unlimited.
Motion?
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Upstate.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Kennas?
Yes, resolution 2016-149, renewing club licenses.
Resolution, township Lacy County, Board of State of New Jersey, renewing club liquor licenses in the township of Lacy. Those applications completed and submitted is the Moose Lodge and the Forkett River Tuna Club.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Kennas?
Yes, resolution 2016-150, providing for a special item of revenue in the 2016 budget.
Resolution, township Lacy County, Board of State of New Jersey, providing for the insertion of a special item of revenue and appropriation in the 2016 municipal budget known as a Chapter 159 of the township of Lacy pursuant to NJSA 48,4-87. We have received money from the Clean Communities Grant Program. At the time that the budget was set, we had no idea what we were receiving, but we are now inserting it into the budget in order to use it for this year and we received $85,988.88.
Motion?
Move it.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Kennas?
Yes, resolution 2016-151, authorizing the release of a maintenance bond for Lakeside Drive roadway improvement project.
Resolution, township Lacy County, Board of State of New Jersey, authorizing the release of a maintenance guarantee for the 2012 Lakeside Drive roadway improvement project. This project has completed its one-year maintenance period and we are now releasing the bond.
Motion?
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Kennas?
Yes, resolution 2016-152, authorizing the release of a performance bond for the Cedar Drive Road Improvement Project.
Resolution, township Lacy County, Board of State of New Jersey, authorizing the release of a performance bond for Johnson Baron for the 2014 DOT Municipal Aid Project known as Cedar Drive Road Improvements. They are being released from performance bond and now they will post a maintenance bond for a period of one year.
Motion?
Second?
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor Kennas?
Yes, resolution 2016-153, authorizing the tax collector to transfer payments to correct an error.
Resolution, township Lacy County, Board of State of New Jersey, authorizing the tax collector to transfer payments applied erroneously to Block 1024.13, Lot 21, to correct properties as per the Schedule A that is attached.
Motion?
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Kennas?
Yes, resolution 2016-154, authorizing the refund of deposit monies.
Resolution, township Lacy County, Board of State of New Jersey, authorizing the refund of deposits held for the use of municipal facilities.
Move it.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Kennas?
Yes, resolution 2016-155, authorizing the payment of township bills.
Resolution, township Lacy County, Board of State of New Jersey, authorizing the payment of township bills in the amount of $827,153.70.
Motion?
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Kennas?
Yes, motion to approve caucus meeting minutes of May 12, 2016.
Move it.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve township meeting minutes of May 12, 2016?
Move it.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve raffle license applications for the Forkett River Tuna Club?
Move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Addons? Okay, first, it's resolution 156, it's resolution, township Lacy County, Board of State of New Jersey, authorizing the execution of a shared services agreement with the County of Ocean pursuant to NJSA 48,65-1 at SEC for the 911 Emergency Telecommunication Services. We are under contract with the county for them to do our police dispatching and our first aid and fire dispatching. Our contract expired as of yesterday. I had just received the contract yesterday as well and this will be for a seven-year period and will expire in 2023 and it will be for the same way that is currently dispatched and the same fee with regards to the emergency, the EMS squads.
Motion?
Move it. Second.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor Kennas?
Yes.
Nexus, resolution 157, resolution, township Lacy County, Board of State of New Jersey, authorizing receipt of bids for various infrastructure projects, park improvements, facility improvements, vehicles and equipment in accordance with the approved 2016 capital budget for the township of Lacy. Those projects are going to be the realignment of a portion of the veterans way roadway and drainage improvements to Bayberry Village Phase Two, the 3,000 gallon pumper for the Forkett River Fire Company and we're going out to pay for bulk of tubinous material.
Motion?
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Kennas?
Yes.
Nexus, resolution 158, resolution, township Lacy County, Board of State of New Jersey, authorizing the employment of seasonal employees for the Department of Public Works. We have another young man who will be working as a summer laborer with us and his name is Jared Scartino.
Move it. Second.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
And Mayor Kennas?
Yes.
That is all I have to add on.
Comes from the cranny, Deputy Mayor Curatolo.
Thank you, Mayor. I would, just like, you know, there's some pleasant things we would like to bring to township's attention. First and foremost, Relay for Life. I could see us up here, we're wearing pink on our breast cancer month and the survivors. The relay was last week in Veterans Park. It was hosted by Berkeley Township, but there was also, Lacy Township was there, our high school band was there. The stories each year from the participants are more and more heartfelt, they're visceral and I am truly hopeful that my 11-year-old daughter will see a world without cancer. I'm hoping that we just put our boot on the throat of this horrible disease and see it take its last breath and that's as clear as I could be. There were, there were young people, there were more seasoned than senior citizens. It's, it's, it's horrible and it's happy because you're a survivor and once you're diagnosed. So, I applaud the people that participated and the researchers, hoping that those funding pathways stay open and that we can continue research and move on. I would also like to commend our Police Department on Meet the Officer last Saturday at our middle school. It was extremely well attended, children of all ages were there, a lot of my colleagues were there. My colleagues were also at the Relay for Life. I think it's critically important to have a first positive interaction with a police officer for a young person. I think that pays dividends down the road. I commend our, our department, all of the officers that I saw there and there were a great many for that good work and I, again, I do think that that pays dividends. I would like to remind people of our Memorial Day Parade. We're going to be stepping off at 10 at Lacy United Methodist Church and a great time to be had by all, always well attended. I also wanted to talk briefly, if I could, about the nuclear plan. I know there's, there's rumors abound. I want you to know that, everybody to know that this committee is working. We know that there's a closure date, possibly in 2019, the decommissioning process takes a very long time and we're continuing to try to meet with potential suitors to keep that going. There'll be a security presence there, there's some spent fuel there, there's value to this tax base as a ratable in those, those items. So, I, I think it's not as dire as everyone is saying and I think the mayor's been involved with that, Committee Man, Quinn has been involved with that, meeting with different organizations as will we all become more involved with the apex issue facing this town. And closing comments, we talked about some liquor license tonight, liquor licenses tonight. There are some liquor establishments in town that have gone through an evidence-based program called TIPS, Training and Intervention Procedures from, there's a company down, I think it's in Virginia, but the county also provides that training as well and there are several that took advantage of it. And it's a safe service of alcohol here in town and all throughout the county and that training has been offered for free to different licensees and licensees generally speaking will experience a reduced rate on their liability insurance if they go through that training. A great training, I'm actually certified in it. I have no business interest in it, full disclosure at all, it's for public safety and public health. That's all I have tonight, Mayor.
Thank you, Pete. Committee Member McDonald?
Thank you, Mayor. Pardon. As we know, this weekend kicks off our summer season and our rec department gets going full tilt for the summer program in a few weeks, so if you haven't signed up for any activities, do so now. Check out our website if you don't know what activities are going on, but there's really something there for everybody. Our rec department does a really good job of putting stuff together for the, for the summertime. June 11th is Hooked on Fishing at the First Lake, registration is going to be early in the morning, so get out there and catch some fish. June 18th is the Beach Bash, which is at the Middle Lake. That's the 50th anniversary today, the beach is open, you can get your beach badges a little bit early, so come on out for that. July 3rd, we're holding our annual fireworks at the high school and August 13th is Lacy Day, Mayor. And one last thing, Monday's Memorial Day. I'm just going to ask everyone to take a few minutes on Monday to think about how lucky we are to live in a country with all the freedoms that we have and remember those soldiers who have died in the preservation of our life.
Thank you, Tim. Committee Member Juliano?
Mayor, thank you. I have not too much to say other than I hope to see everybody out at the parade on Monday. It's very important to, to honor all of the people that serve us as we had today with this gentleman. I would like to see, I know we're all going to be there. Unfortunately, I cannot make it to the parade that night. My daughter's leaving for Paris to study abroad, so that's the same time I have to get her up to the airport to leave, so I'm going to be missing it and that bothered me because it's the first one I've missed so far because it means a lot to me. But, other than that, I just want to thank all the volunteers in town. Mr. Bender, I'd like to thank you for all you did with the Relay for Life. I seen how you were running around that day and I appreciate it, I really do, it means a lot to me. Other than that, Mayor, everybody enjoy the summer as it's coming because it's coming quick and the weather changed real quick from that 45, 50 to 90, but that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Nick. Committee Man Quinn?
By the time you get to this end of the podium, it's like you've said everything. But ju, just, you know, to go over a couple things. Barry, you know, you did a great job. I know when we saw you up there at opening ceremony, you were kind of hoping and praying that the rain wouldn't start and it was probably the most miserable day you could ever ask for. But, you know, you, all the folks that, you know, worked, all the volunteers did a tremendous job, weather just didn't work in your favor, but it was still so important to do it for the great cause that it is and I know you raised a lot of money, I'm sure you'll, you know, give us a little update on that when you come up, so. But hats off to you because I know you've been doing it for as many years as Nick, he's been marching the parades, you know, it's something that really does mean a lot for the community here, so. The cop car program, it was a great success. We had, like Deputy Mayor Curatolo said, we had the Meet the Officers Day on Saturday, this past Saturday and it was nice because we only, out of our entire staff, the officers, dispatchers, the staff in the police department building, we only had three officers that were missing and they, they had prior duty obligations that they just couldn't get there for the day, but it gave the kids in the community the ability to really meet all the officers and then everyone that works in the police department, one-on-one, which is so important, like somebody said before, to build relationships with the officers when they're at such a young age. But I just want the folks to know that those officers all came in, some of them had worked all night, they came in on their own time, nobody was paid for that day, everything was completely volunteer and all the money that they spent, you know, throughout the program itself, the cop courts themselves responsible, local businesses where the money came from, but the, the program was all, also paid for through the, you know, police funding, not, not township funding, it's money that they raise in their own way and it didn't affect the taxpayers at all, but it was a great, great program and I, I hope to see it continue for many more years. I was talking to Mayor Amato at the Relay for Life the other day and I think a lot of other towns have heard so much good about Lacy and what, what it does for the kids other towns have heard so much good about Lacy and what, what it does for the kids, that they're gonna be reaching out to get involved as well, so.
Great.
Hats off to the police department for a great day, um, Memorial Day Parade, it is so important that we come out and, and honor all those that fought and, uh, you know, gave up their lives, or like, uh, Timmy said, for the, you know, the freedom that we all have, you know, in this country that we live in, so, come on out, uh, you know, but don't, don't just come to the parade, come down to Town Hall right after the parade is over, we have the ceremony next door, uh, you know, to, to honor, you know, all the fallen, all the wreaths are put out there on, on, um, Monday, so it's really a, truly a nice day that, uh, you know, gives, gives, you know, some sort of recognition to everybody that fought and, uh, gave their lives for us as Americans, and last thing, as, as, as somebody said, you know, we're, we're honoring, you know, this is, uh, Pink to Town Pink Month as well as, uh, you know, the Relay for Life, which, we're wearing pink, we're all wearing purple the other day for the Relay for Life, but it's, again, it's so important that, that we put awareness on, uh, you know, the fighting, uh, the fighting, the battle to try and find a way, you know, to eliminate cancer in this country, or in this world, because everybody at some point in your life does, you know, get affected by it, so, uh, we, we just felt, you know, we're all gonna, you know, wear pink, and if you, you know, you have the opportunity to wear it right from now until, uh, the end of the, uh, month, and, and show your support for all those that have fought with, you know, for battling cancer, Robert, again, thank you for that flag, uh, thank you for your service coming here tonight, that, that truly means a lot to us, and we'll certainly put that flag to very good use, and we're happy you're home, we're happy you're home safe, and, and we hope you stay home for a little while, and get to enjoy yourself, so.
Thanks, too.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you, Gary, um, yes, I'll be brief, I had a chance to attend a life jacket dedication by the Coast Guard Auxiliary on Saturday, um, that, they had, uh, it's a cho- children's life jacket, um, uh, kiosk, the, that, uh, the kids can borrow if they forget a life jacket, it's at Ocean Beach Marina, apparently there's a bunch of them spread out, uh, throughout the town, um, but I want people to know that, that the materials and the, the actual kiosk were built and donated by, uh, by Home Depot, and, um, I just want everybody to know that, that Home Depot is a very good partner to the town, um, in addition to that, I also attended the Relay for Life, and both organizations, the Coast Guard Auxiliary and the Relay for Life Volunteers, I just wanna thank all the volunteers and businesses that support all these events, because it lessens the burdens on townships, because they provide services that we often cannot, and finally, also, again, Robert, thanks again for the flag, I really appreciate it, and, you know, we are glad you're home safe, and I just wanna thank all the men and women in our armed services, and hope everybody has a happy and safe Memorial Day weekend, and with that, I'll open it up to the public. Barry?
Barry, Bender, historic Bay Avenue, uh, as mentioned, last weekend was Relay for Life, it was beautiful on Friday, it was beautiful later on on Sunday, actually, Monday was really beautiful, but it rained the whole time, uh, accident got a break at two o'clock, I stuck my head out, I was like, Committee Member Quinn saw me, I was like, come on now, let's go, it, it broke a little bit, we got the opening ceremony without people drowning, um, and, uh, it actually turned out very well, people stayed and stayed and stayed, uh, we actually pulled the plug early because people were getting drenched, the water was building up on the ground, et cetera, so we pulled the plug around twelve-thirty instead of six AM, uh, but, we beat a lot of goals, uh, our final, well, our fa- final figure that evening was over ninety-four thousand dollars, which is a new record for